Forgot that. Good morning to the public at home. I'd like to call to order the first meeting in the new town hall. This is a committee of the whole meeting, which is generally an information gathering meeting, a touch, a touch less in, less formal than the regular ones, mainly gathering information, asking questions of our staff and management team. At this time, I'd like to confirm the agenda. Are there any emergent items from any of the councilors? Seeing none. Anything from administration? Nothing from administration. Then I'm looking for a motion to confirm the agenda as presented. Councillor Peterson, I can't hear you. Yep?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to confirm the agenda as presented. All in favor? And that motion is carried. I'm not sure if we've lost Jason, Councillor Montgomery. We had him briefly, but there were some computer problems. He might be joining back. Item three, we have no presentations. Number four, no delegations. And that brings us to item five, confirmation of minutes on adoption of the September ninth, 2020 Committee of the Whole Minutes. Councillor Sobel has, are you making-
Thank you. And good morning, your worship. I move those minutes of September ninth, 2020.
Thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor to accept those minutes as presented. All in favor? And-
And-
Montgomery, are you in favor?
Montgomery, are you in favor?
Councillor Montgomery, can you hear me? Are you in favor-
Can you hear me?
Yes. Are you in favor of the minutes?
Oh, yes.
Thank you very much. Five point two, adoption of the October fourteenth, 2020 Committee of the Whole Minutes. Councillor Corbiel.
I move the council adopt the October fourteenth, 2020 Committee of the Whole Minutes.
Thank you very much. You've all heard the motion. All in favor? And that motion is carried. Five point three, adoption of the November fourth, 2020 Special Committee of the Whole Minutes.
I can move those.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councillor Montgomery. All in favor? And that motion is carried. And at this time, I'm looking for a motion to go into Committee of the Whole. Councillor, I just drew a blank. Bauer, sorry. It's been a while.
I move to go into Committee of the Whole, your worship.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to go into Committee of the Whole. All in favor? And that motion is carried. And I apologize for my mental breakdown there. I was, I totally drew a blank for a moment. That brings us to item six, unfinished business. I don't believe we have any unfinished business. We have no tabled items. So that brings us to items or reports from administration. Eight point one, the business license fees for 2021. Mr. T D, you're coming to present?
Yes, thank you, your worship. This item was, administration was requested to bring this item for council discussion. Two or three things to be aware of. One is, the town has billed in excess of $60,000 already for business licenses for this current year. Approximately 80 businesses have paid for business license so far. And if council was to waive business license fees, we would have to either increase property taxes or do a reserve, a transfer from reserves to offset the revenue loss. Those are my comments, your worship.
Just before I go to council with, for questions, as far as being a shortfall for business licenses, and just so everybody at home knows too, and reminder to council, I'm the one who brought this forward because I'd gotten two, two private Facebook message questions about business licenses. Since the economy is hurting so badly, in 2020, we waived them. And so with 2021 looking equally as painful going into the, into the spring and hopefully not summer, these people were wondering about it for 2021. My question to you, Mel, considering that this could be a shortfall then, do we have any money coming in this year from the SolarCraft project?
Yes, there is a certain amount of these revenues, but not the debt, not on the budget of that.
Okay, so my question, the second part of that question then, I guess, would be, we don't necessarily have to have a property tax increase.
Your worship, we didn't hear that response.
Okay, sorry, Mel, they didn't hear your response?
The revenue that we have from SolarCraft is also included in the budget. And so, yes, there, there would have to be some transfer if we were to vacate the business license fee.
Okay, yeah, that clears up my question because I, I thought that we hadn't counted it all in, but that's, that's good to know. Are there questions from councilors? Councillor Bauer?
Thank you, worship. My first question is to Mr. T D. And I would just like to know how much is a current business license? And are they tiered for home-based businesses, mortar, brick and mortar businesses, and taxis?
There are, there is no differentiation on the business license fee. The fee is $100 for Strathmore businesses. Walmart pays the same as a home-based business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Bauer. Any other questions for Mr. T D? Councillor Sobel?
Just a comment. There's one other factor in regards to business licenses, and that is a source of revenue for the Chamber of Commerce as well, for every business that is a member of the Chamber of Commerce. Those business license fees go to the, the Chamber as a, as a, a funding avenue. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. T D. So that's, you know, that's another factor to consider as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Sobel. Councillor Corbiel?
Thank you, worship. I have a question, I guess, for Mr. T D as well. Is it possible, like, I'm not, I don't remember when business licenses are due, but I'm pretty sure it's the beginning of the year. Is there any way that we could even give an extension or anything till like July or something to maybe give a lease?
Yes, council could extend the due date for business license fees if they wish by motion.
That's a good idea.
May I continue, your worship?
Yes, you can.
The only reason I was thinking that or whatever, I, I'm just trying to think of an easier way to go about accepting the, the revenue instead of trying to rework a budget, try and consider the Chamber and what they, the portion that they would get from the business license and everything else. I'm just trying to give, for everybody involved.
Thank you, Councillor Corbiel. It's, those are some good points too. Question, oh, sorry, Mr. Legore.
Yes, to you, Mr. Mayor. My recommendation to council would be that we not make any decision at this time. We're two weeks into 2021. If we find that the businesses have to remain shut down for a good portion of the year, we could look at a rebate program sometime during the year if there is a big impact. But I think it's premature at this time. Let's see what the impact of COVID will be over the year, and then deal with it at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Legore. Councillor Bauer?
Thank you, worship. I very much agree with C A O Legore. And I also was thinking that perhaps for any businesses that feel that they cannot pay, that we keep track of that and perhaps bring those to council, and we could exempt those businesses based on an individual case by case.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much, Mr. T D. So I, I guess we're in a bit of a holding pattern, and we'll see how things go for the various businesses during the coming year.
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. That brings us to item eight. Oh, Councillor Corbiel?
Thank you, worship. Do we need a motion to table this?
I think it's just presented as information.
Okay, sounds, oh yeah, I guess we're in committee. Never mind. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item eight point two, the operations update, 2020. And just, just before we get started, I wanted to take just a, a moment to thank Donna McCallum, who is our, our head of operations. We had a massive snowstorm on December twenty-second, twenty-first and twenty-second. I just wanted to say publicly and for the people at home and the media, that your leadership and your operations team did an amazing job.
Thank you.
You worked really hard. I know you brought in outside contractors to deal with it. And you just came forward and did such great work to get the snow removed in a, in a timely fashion. Also wanted to thank Jeff Person in our communications department. He and the comms department did a great job of communicating all your efforts as an operations team. And I believe we talked just before, and, and you mentioned that a lot of the calls and, and complaints dropped drastically because of the comms team and getting out the word to people. So kudos to you and your staff. It was phenomenal how hard you worked to get the snow cleared.
Thank you.
Thank you. So welcome to the morning presentation.
Thank you. I can't see what they said.
And I think councillors, you had, you had the operations report emailed to you, and you might also have it in your agenda package. There's, there's a bit of a situation as far as trying to do a Zoom meeting as well as having PowerPoints done on the large screen. So you'll have to refer at your home as far as that report goes. So I'll, I'll leave it to you now, Donna.
I'm not sure what you guys can see right now. Just tell me when you got the picture of my team up there, and then I'll just take it from there.
The little elves.
Yeah. The snow elves.
The snow elves.
However, they are holding multiple power tools, as you'll see in the picture.
Yes. That's awesome.
I thought they were gnomes.
They could be. They do look like gnomes.
Could be that too.
I was gonna comment on the budget for the hats, but I think they're very creative.
Maybe while we're waiting, Donna, you could just talk in general about your approaches during the COVID-19 situation. Just updating people at home as far as how the changes you've had to make as a staff?
That's changing pretty much on a regular basis right now, that's for sure. With the new restrictions in place, different start times, different buildings again. We are in our cohorts as well. So we've teamed everybody up into twos, and basically any task that they're given right now is with that cohort only. We try as much as possible as well to keep the team in the same pieces of equipment. Everybody's been assigned their own truck. So far, it's working well. It's sometimes during the snow event, it was a little bit, you know, because we had to get together as a team to talk about what was going to happen throughout the day. But where we would meet was inside of our shop so we could physically distance from each other and make sure that we could have a meeting and make sure everybody was informed of what was going to happen that day, where we are going, who was doing what, that sort of thing. But so far, I mean, it's been pretty good. Luckily, we had one COVID case in our operations team this year, which resulted in two close contacts with that person. So everybody had to self-isolate. Luckily, the person is quite young and was asymptomatic.
That's great.
Yeah, so, which was, which was good.
So I believe we have the PowerPoint up now, so maybe we could carry on. Did you want to add anything in the PowerPoint as far as COVID-19?
I've no, that's okay. I think I'm going to cover some of this in the, in the presentation, just about kind of what we did.
Sounds good.
Okay. Someone brace is ready? Okay, so I'll get started. This is my operations team, my, my snow elf. There we go. Okay, next page.
The chainsaw in the front row looks good.
And we have, at the very top, there is our elf on a shelf, basically. Okay, so I'll start off with the COVID-19 because that has had a significant impact in operations this year. So 2020 has been a uniquely challenging year. Operations played an integral role in the town's COVID-19 response. We've been working since the beginning of the pandemic. The first thing we did was activated our COVID contingency plan. And we staggered start times. We separated our staff into the cohort teams and into three different buildings. This was in fact, in effect for the full-time staff as well as for all the seasonal staff. The ECC relied heavily on the ops team to assist with many of their incentives to keep the public safe. As little was known about COVID at the very beginning, we took the opportunity to clean and sanitize all of our equipment tools and our shop. We developed safe work practices and procedures within operations to keep the staff safe. For example, the procedure for changing the public garbages included sanitizing prior to changing out the garbage. When we went to do cart repairs, sanitation was also an important part of the procedure. I'd like to point out that when the closure of the rec facilities happens, we seconded two staff from the arena, one from the hub and six from the pool. And I have to give a shout out to those staff. They were thrown into a situation that they didn't really sign up for, and they were some of the hardest workers that we've ever had on our staff. They were just really impressive. So I have to give a shout out to them. Next slide. So we dedicated, we dedicated 190 hours to the ECC. We assisted with installing the maintenance of the signage on the playgrounds, which was the closures and the rules. We assisted with installing and maintenance of the signage regarding the closures of the Diamonds, the Splash Park, and the Tennis Court. We assisted with closing the Disc Golf Course. We installed maintenance, or sorry, we installed and maintained and updated the signs and the tree tags on the recognition trees. We installed the backup generator at the library. When reopening, we changed out all the signage at all these locations that were closed. We assisted with new gate installs at the new WID walking paths and installed all the garbage cans, the dog bag holders, and maintained the temporary dog park. We assisted the pool with setting up barricades during the pool resurfacing because as part of the closure of the rec facilities, as you know, they did some maintenance activities there. So we helped them out with some of that. And we assisted with the setup of the COVID checkpoint at the town hall. Another COVID protocol we are really proud of was recreating the divider at the outdoor rink. This allowed the patrons to play ball hockey with their cohorts while safely distancing themselves from other patrons. Aside from COVID-19, the spray park had another odd against it. Due to a motor vehicle accident, the panel box that provides the electricity to the spray park was knocked out. We purchased a small generator, and the staff who were monitoring the spray park for COVID protocols also started up the generator and ran the spray park with that generator. So we also seconded eight staff from the pool to help us with the opening of the spray park. So they sat and monitored the spray park during the opening hours. We placed physical distancing circles in the green spaces of the park. We supplied hand sanitizer, and the staff monitored how many patrons were in the spray park to ensure that the capacity limits were not exceeded. The staff assisted with cleaning and sanitizing the washrooms as well, and we also installed extra garbage cans, just to make sure there was less contact for the patrons. Next slide. So another thing that's a key part of the maintenance of the town is storm water management. Strathmore Lakes has had capacity issues in the past, and this year we did have an incredibly rainy wet spring, and the pond did breach its banks. Operations deployed our pump, and we pumped the pond for 45 days. And then there's just some statistics there about how much time we spent on the pond. And that beautiful picture of the pump in the sun setting. Next one. So many of our dry ponds were lacking some maintenance, as you can see. This year, we started with clearing the inlets and the outlets. And the picture on the left-hand side, the one kind of closest to you can sort of see like a lighter clump of green grass, that is actually an outlet that had completely grown in. So this dry pond was holding water all year round. It was, if you walked through, it was difficult for us to mow it because it always had water. The machines would get stuck and that sort of thing. So we hydrovacued out the outlets and reinstalled the rocks and got it all cleaned up. And now the pond, the dry pond is dry. There's definitely more to do in our dry ponds, and that's going to be another focus of ours in the 2021 season. And I've got more dry pond stuff to show you there. So this one is, sorry, the first picture was the Aspen Dry Pond. This one is the Strathhaven Dry Pond. This also, as you can see, has a lot of overgrown material. We have little shrubs starting to sprout out in there, and that needed to get taken care of because this one as well was also holding water year round. And as we started getting into cleaning these things out, you'll see that we had quite a bit of sediment in some of the pipes. And this is because of the growth that's around those inlets and outlets is the, the material can't get out where it's supposed to go. So we had this flushed out, and then we cleaned up all the material that obviously came out of that pipe and hydrovacued it all out. And the one on the, the right-hand side is just showing you that the pond, the dry pond wasn't functioning properly. There should not be water in those dry ponds at all times. They should dry up after a rain or a melting So this is just some progress in the Strathhaven Dry Pond. So this is the after photos of the inlets and outlets. So left-hand side is just as it was cleaned out, and then us starting to put the rocks back in place. So another task that we do is we do crack sealing as well. So we did seven full days of crack sealing. We got most of our priority one, two, and three roads cracked sealed where necessary, but there is still more to do in the 2021 season. And potholes. So we put a lot of asphalt on the roads this year. We put 23.43 tons of asphalt in potholes. The crews went out on 10 different occasions with our hot box to repair potholes. And then we also did 12 applications of cold mix, which is basically asphalt inside of a barrel that we take out and do repairs with as well. We maintained six kilometers of gravel roads and 23 kilometers of alleys. So we went out on 17 times to do the alleys and, sorry, 17 times on the gravel roads and 20 times in the back alleys. Next slide is our street sweeping slide. So we had a pretty, obviously going back to the, the pond maintenance, we had a very wet spring. So we had a little bit of a late start to our street sweeping program. But we did get 42 days done. We got the entire town swept. One thing we worked on was route mapping for the street sweeping. So using the garbage collection map and where we would have our routes go for the street sweeping. And the plan is to use that same mapping, but better advertising in the future as well for that. And just grow that little program. And sidewalk repairs. So in 2019, we had a complete sidewalk assessment done around town. The hazards were rated on a number basis, so five being extreme, one being a low hazard. Between 2019 and the end of 2020, we repaired all the fives, fours, and threes, and that's repair or replacement, depending what was the situation with the sidewalk. However, I'd like to point out that due to freeze-thaw cycles, sometimes a two can move up to a five very quickly. So when residents do call us and express a concern that they have a trip hazard or anything, we go out and investigate, and then we basically will bump it up if it has moved up into that, into that hazard. And cart maintenance. So we had 27 new deployments this year. We did 166 wheel repairs. So we are currently replacing the plastic wheels with heavier duty rubber wheel, and we're continuing to do that. Basically, when my crews out, even if they see carts that are with a broken wheel, they'll just replace it as they see it, even if the resident hasn't called it in. We did 52 lid repairs and 72, 72 cart replacements. And that could just be from lost in a hopper or cracked or something like that. 52 sign installs, repairs, and replacements. This is various street signs could be your stop, yield. We tend to, for some reason, Madison Court, the street sign goes missing. So that one usually gets replaced at least three times a year. And snow. So this year, we have dedicated 2,500 hours towards snow events. And this also includes the events that happened on the 21st and 22nd. This is shared between the roads and the pathways. And then just a couple of our little projects that we did this year. So we moved our salt store, or sorry, our pickle mix storage from the Westchester Yard over to the Orchard Park Yard. We had a new coverall tent installed and got it paved and lined with some wood. And as you can see, little reflectors to let us know not to go any higher than that with our storage. We also had an automated gate sensor installed in our operation yards. So now we can just, the gate opens automatically without us having to go and open it ourselves. And we also had the irrigation at Station Park connected to potable water this year. This was in conjunction with Communities in Bloom as well. And the other thing we got done this year was the George Freeman Trail crossing. We laid some sod, we planted roses, and planted the cottage pinks in there as well. And due to COVID-19, the town was unable to host as many events as we have in the past. This year, we supported the various events put in place to support the community during the difficult times. So we assisted the FCSS and the hub with 11 pop-up park events. We assisted with the setup of 15 farmer market events, and assisted FCSS with six good food box events as well. And the cemetery, we had 13 cremains, 15 burials, and three vaults this year. Okay, and then with parks, we were pretty busy there as well. So a number of hours towards pruning, 658 hours on the litter control. We normally, under a normal circumstance, would do 52 garbage runs and 52 half garbage runs, which is one, a garbage run is changing every single, checking every single garbage can in town. Half garbage run is when we've identified our busiest locations. We call that a half run. But because of the snow event in, on December 20th and our 21st and 22nd, all the staff were utilized into the snow event. So we didn't get the, the garbage runs done that week. The other thing I'd like to point out as well that we did get done is, in Strathmore Lakes, there was a request to have the bench arms installed on the benches, and that got done as well. And we're actually going to carry that program forward and inspect all of our benches and make sure that the arms are installed for, on every bench in town. So this year, I, I think stress levels were high for a lot of people. So this year, we went above and beyond with what we would normally install for Christmas lights. So we dedicated 176 hours to the install of these lights. This is shared between four staff. And we did receive a lot of positive feedback from the residents about the lights this year. And the outdoor rink, so this year, 300 And the outdoor rink. So this year, three hundred and sixteen point five hours were spent on our outdoor rink in 2020. And then work orders. So as you know, we have the City Works program. So we've had over a thousand work orders that have been created in operations this year. Two hundred and fifty-three to the mechanic and sixty to the building maintenance work orders. And I bring those two up in particular because they're new to the program, so we're going to evolve that a little bit more with them. We also are integrating the rest of the departments into using City Works and the plan is by the end of twenty-one, end of 2021, that all the departments within the town will be using City Works to input their requests for work from operations. Any questions?
Thank you, Donna, for your presentation. It's very clear and it shows an incredible amount of work that's being done by you and your staff, so it's much appreciated. Are there questions from counselors for Donna? Counselor Sobel and then Counselor Corbey?
Thank you, Donna. There is absolutely nothing that I see here that I'm not overly impressed with. You guys have, you just rocked it this year and it really shows some really good projects. Thank you for that. One of the questions I have for you is in regards to crack sealing. Which is also always important for, for, for the making our streets last a little bit longer. Is that program used on our pathways as well, our paved pathways?
Currently it has not been, but we do have a program in conjunction with the infrastructure team for pathway replacements, but it's nothing saying that we couldn't crack seal on those as well, depending on the condition of it. A lot of the time, some of the cracks are caused by roots and that sort of thing. So sometimes that there's a little bit, a crack seal isn't going to help fix that, right? But absolutely, we could assess that.
I, I don't profess to be any kind of an expert in regards to crack ceilings. It was just a question that that I thought might be able to help out, but so thank you. I, yeah, I just made a note here. I, I'm just amazed that you guys got the sidewalk repairs, the fours and fives, and some of the threes done this year. I know how many there were. That dude on his, on his little bicycle or whatever it was, who did the examining, he was here for a while and, and I'm sure, I'm, I don't know how many cases there were, but I know there's, there was a ton. So I, I just, I was a little surprised to see that you've, you've done so many repairs on the, on the higher priority. And lastly, when you talk about the City Works, is there a, an effort to combine citizen communication forms into City Works as well, or did I misunderstand that?
That would be my preference, but I know that there is a lot of seniors that don't have the technology to do that. But I think what we could do is work with communications that when a request comes forward, that they could turn it into a service request.
Okay, I, I just, you know, it'd be, it'd be great if we had one, one one address for people to go to, to, because we, at this time, there's two different methods to, to bring something to the attention of the town and, and it would sure be great to have it as one. So I don't know if that's possible. If we ever get there, I think it would be very convenient. Thank you, Donna. I really, I'm, I'm impressed with you and your team. And I really do thank you for, for the care you've put into the, the operations this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. I have Counselor Corbey, then Counselor Bauer, then Counselor Peterson.
Thank you, Your Worship. And thank you, Donna, for this report. It was very thorough. You guys are very well organized. I loved how everything is laid out and, and you guys have your stuff together and it shows. I do have one quick thing that I'd like to clarify though. The twenty-five hundred hours of snow removal and stuff like that, that is from January to December, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, no, I was just going to make sure that it wasn't. Some people would, I, I know when I read it, I, just because I know how the budgets run, I was sure it was December or January to December, but I was just making sure it wasn't. People weren't assuming it was just like this winter thus far, I guess. And my last question is where's Station Park for that irrigation system? Sorry, I couldn't find that.
That is formerly English Gardens, Lambert, North Lambert Park, next to the libraries.
Awesome. Thank you very much and thank you for everything you guys do. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Corbey, Counselor Bauer, then Counselor Peterson.
Thank you so much, Your Worship. I just wanted to start, Donna, by commending you for the endless hours that you spend in operations, not only with your staff, but and in creating that really good culture where people want to go over and above in each of their jobs. And then protecting them and keeping in mind their safety throughout this COVID pandemic. It's, it balancing those things is not only stressful, but I think it's also a little bit of an art. And I, I really am impressed on how you have managed through a lot of these different parts that you have. And you do have a lot of parts. And the nice thing is that everyone can see what you do. And I'm really thankful to the community for stepping up and thanking you when, when you're definitely due for a thanks. And I just wanted to pass my own along as well. I do have a couple of questions. We did have a little bit of a glitch with street sweeping this year. And I was wondering if you're currently reviewing that policy. I did also want to ask whether or not Station Park irrigation, I had heard something that that may have been also a joint venture with Communities in Bloom. So I just wanted to ask whether or not they're also being able to be recognized in this. And then I also wanted to ask if George Freeman Crossing, if those plastic guards and the sticks are going to be removed in the spring.
Yes, they are going to be removed in the spring, yes. And yes, that's the Station Park, the irrigation was within conjunction with Communities in Bloom. And we're always reviewing our policies. Anything that we do, any year we do it, we're always going to debrief after an event. So for example, going to the street sweeping, that's something we're already talking about, what street sweeping is going to look like this spring for us.
And making sure that those placards get out before like twenty-four, forty-eight hours ahead of time?
Yes.
I really do believe that the people of Strathmore want to help and get their vehicles off the road. It definitely showed during our snow event. There were people saying, how can I help? And a lot of people really took to heart that we were asking them not to put snow onto the road. And so this was one of the, one of the times that I actually saw that message being consistently reminded to the public and I, and I thank you for that. My last question is, is it possible to, you know, work with AHS and perhaps have a spring community cleanup event with regards to litter?
Absolutely. I like those community events that help us pick up litter. I know there's people that already do it, that as they're walking, they just carry garbage bags and pick it up, but I know there's also been a lot of interest expressed from various user groups like TD, some of the youth groups, that sort of thing, that have already expressed interest in helping pick up litter. And I've always got people reaching out to help out with that.
It would be fun to, I mean, the term for that while you're walking or jogging or whatever and picking up litter is actually called plogging.
Yes.
And it's taken off in many communities across Europe. And I think people do it here, like you said, all the time. I know I do. I carry a bag with me. And I'm just wondering if maybe we can get some signage out or something fun in the community so that we can have, you know, distances to garbages set out or some type of plogging PSAs or, you know, something fun like that. So I'd just like to present that and leave it in your capable hands to, to think about how we could implement that. Thank you very much, Donna.
I will work with comms on that. And I think Counselor Bauer, where the confusion was with the street sweeping was our preliminary sweep of the communities. So prior to going into a community before signage, we would go in and try to pick up the bulk of the debris on the road. And I think that's where people got confused because there was no signage in place and they thought it was time to move their vehicles. So I'll work with communications on that because it does help when we do that preliminary sweep to get it done quickly. When we do go into the residential with the signs up. So, but I'll work with communications on that, make sure that it's made a little bit more clear what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bauer. Counselor Peterson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Donna. I just wanted to say that in my nearly forty years of living in this community, it has been remarkable what you've accomplished and I have never seen an operations organization accomplish what you've accomplished in, in this relatively short time. And, and your response to some really highly emergent issues is is impressive and was noted widely across the community. The only, not a question I have, but a point that has been raised by, by several seniors relevant to what Counselor Sobel mentioned in terms of communications was an opportunity that they're looking to because they recognize that, as you said, many seniors don't utilize the same communication. That, that there be some kind of a call-in system that would link also to City Works. So it's not for discussion today, but for consideration going into the future, that, that this is something that they would anxiously anticipate. And again, thank you. Very, very impressive work. And certainly with your efforts and your sensibilities around needs of community, you certainly did a great deal to provide security to community and raise the spirits of people. And I appreciate what you've, what you've contributed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Just a couple of things from me, Donna, if I could.
Your Worship.
Counselor, Counselor Montgomery, did you have a?
I just wanted to say something, but if you'd like to go first, that's totally fine.
I didn't, I didn't see your hand, so I wasn't sure. No, you're up. You can go for sure.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And yeah, thank you very much, Donna, for, for all this information and for your presentation. Yeah, it's been a lot of hard work over the last year and ever since you came on, there's been a lot of hard work coming from you, so I really appreciate that. But I really appreciate your, like, the, the community focus that you, you bring to everything. And, and I guess, so one of the things that I picked up from the report was just, I guess, one of my, my pet projects has to do with the flower beds, you know, maintaining flower beds around town, boulevards, and then also the litter pickup. And I noticed that we spent about three thousand hours altogether between maintaining flower beds and, and controlling litter. And, and I have spoken to administration about this and I'm looking forward to seeing it in the future, but just to do with the adopt a flower bed or adopt a boulevard program. I'm hoping we can maybe bring something forward in the near future on that. And then as well about litter control. I also will be bringing forward something to do with hopefully bringing more volunteer effort to bear on a regular basis towards litter control. So that we can just reduce the amount of money and, and labor that the town is putting towards those things. And then I guess to Counselor Bauer's point, thank you for bringing that up. But yeah, and so I, I plan on let's say engage in the community and hopefully another week-long cleanup this spring. And I'll be, I'll be kind of getting started on that sooner and hopefully I'll be engaging a lot more businesses to take part. And then a lot more community groups. And so if there is any businesses or community groups that are interested in in, in partaking in that, either contact the town or you could contact me as well at jason.montgomery@strathmore.ca. And yeah, and I, I look forward to, I guess, yes, seeing what, what the, the community can do as well as when combined with the town. And Donna, I wanted to thank you as well for the last cleanup, for sending your crews around to pick up all the garbage that people in the community picked up and left by the community garbage cans. That was a huge help, so thank you very much.
Thank you. You'll be happy to know I have a lot of experience with adopt-a-park programs.
Oh, like that, that's music to my ears because yeah, that's been on my radar for, for over a year now. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. I just had a few things, Donna, some are, some are comments and a couple are questions. One is an easy one and it's, it's something that a few people privately messaged me about as far as the snow removal on, from the twenty-first, twenty-second snowfall. And it's something that maybe we can do a little bit of work with comms.
Okay.
There's some confusion as far as north boundary road, how far west the town is responsible for. So maybe we can just get word to the public that, you know, Lakewood Meadows, I'm not sure exactly where we end, but it would be good to let the public know that we don't do the entire road all the way to Oxbow.
Right.
Yeah. So that's one. Cemetery. My compliments to your staff and I know Jen's done a lot of work with planning the cemetery. It looks beautiful when you go there in the spring and summer, fall. You guys have done an amazing job there. And that's, that's so good for people who who go to grieve or who go to celebrate their loved ones. So my, my hats off to you for that. A question about the street sweeper. I know several years back, I was on a council that purchased, that made a decision to purchase. As far as the, the approach to street sweeping and the town residents, are you comfortable with us running our own street sweepers? Do you think it's a good thing versus contracting?
I always think it's a better idea to have internal staff doing any maintenance around the town. This is my opinion, is that internal staff will care a little bit more, I guess. Like, it's nothing against contractors, but, you know, they'll miss things. We will miss things too, but we know when they're missed. It's easy for us to identify that sort of thing. But I always prefer it be internal staff that do that type of maintenance. There's nothing saying you can't hire a contracted street sweeper or that we rent an additional one to make it go faster, which is something we could absolutely look at as well. We've talked about it.
Yeah.
Because there are organizations that we have bought equipment from that do rent them as well.
Thank you. I know we had some controversy when we decided to go this route. We had some controversy as far as, you know, the expense of purchasing and maintaining the vehicles, but we felt that it was, it was, it would be our staff who knew where problem areas were.
Yeah.
If an area needed to be redone, they could, they could attack it.
Absolutely.
Whereas a contractor can leave and go on to the next town.
And if you have to contract it out and let's say you're in a situation, let's say we have a, a major rainstorm comes in and half the leaves fall off of the trees and that sort of thing, right? We can react really quickly to that with our street sweeper as opposed to trying to get somebody out to come and do it for us.
That's good to know. And I think that was the reason we leaned in that direction.
It's come in very handy.
Another couple of questions from residents. You know, obviously the, the new town hall and the changes to the, to the downtown area was a controversial situation as well. Maybe you can update us on what's coming our way as far as the gardens here. There, we had some plants, plant material moved and maybe you could just update us on that.
So the plan going forward is there is, the old Devonian garden is going to be replanted here as well. There's going to be a healing garden that's going in as well. I would hope that with the downtown, that the, the residents and the business owners have seen an improvement on the downtown maintenance. We have dedicated staff that were downtown the entire summer. There was two staff that their role was to maintain the entire Lakeside Boulevard as well as the second and third and fourth avenue. Whether it was litter picks, making sure garbage was changed, the debris and the curbs is cleaned up, that sort of thing. So people will see more planting happening at this location in particular.
That's, that's great. I'm sure they're anxiously awaiting that. And I know people, people have come to expect this area to look beautiful. So I can understand why they're so serious about it. Very last one. Again, you and I talked before the meeting and I walk, actually I waddle. I waddle around Strathmore Lake quite a bit and it was really good for me to hear your, your proactive approach as far as when we have major rain events there. Because obviously, and it's not really a freshwater lake, obviously, it's a storm pond. It doesn't drain the way we'd like it to.
Yes.
So we have water that comes up quite quickly. And I'm just hoping, because some seniors had mentioned this to me, if we can keep that always on our radar in June, because this year there were a lot of geese families whose eggs were washed away. Now, I know not everybody likes geese. My daughter is terrified of them. But, but we did lose a bunch this year.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. With regards to, with regards to the lake and the outflow, we recognize there's an issue there and we do have it in our program to fix that issue this year. So hopefully that will rectify any flooding issues or concern with the, the water getting out of the lake. If you want more details, I know that Ethan is, is going to speak briefly here. He could do a quick update on exactly what we're doing, but basically we're, we're going to fix the outflow so that there is no issues with the flooding problems.
Okay. And is that coming up in off-site levees? Or is that, do you want to just do it right now and get it out of the way? And I wanted to congratulate your staff too, Ethan and Jim, your staff, on the rehabilitation work that was done this summer at Strathmore Lake. What a change. And I know that retaining wall is much safer now, the rock shoreline in that south corner, much safer now. And just the fact that they replaced, you know, redid part of the pathway, it helps the pathway system in our town as well. So great job on helping to fix that Strathmore Lake, that end of it.
Thank you, your worship. So yeah, the outfall for Strathmore Lakes, we are intending to replace that this year. The timing of that will depend on what the contractors feel is the safest and also the best for the habitats within that area. It may not happen before this year's rain season, just because of timing, but throughout the 2021 construction season is when it'll get completed.
Okay. Thank you very much. And again, kudos for that. That's all I have, Donna. Mr. Legore. Oh, I have Counselor Sobel next. And then, so we'll go Mr. Legore first?
So, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to echo your comments and some of council's comments on the snow removal. Donna really did an outstanding job and great support from Jim, from Jeff, and even Lisa and Gregory in Finance Department, who I called out between Christmas and New Year's to make sure that we were not going to run the town into a deficit with the snow removal. And due to Donna's leadership, I think Strathmore was a leader in the area. And it was just outstanding to see. It was Christmas break, a lot of people working remotely to support her in any way they could. And it just all worked like clockwork. And I really appreciate the support we got from Donna and her team, and Jim as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sobel?
Thank you. And thank you for those comments. Mr. Legore certainly support them. Donna, I'm sorry, the mayor brought up Strathmore Lakes, and that got me thinking about another thing that I'd wanted to ask you about. And that is our, actually, both our lakes, our main lakes, and the issue of fish. So I just invite some comments, but I'll begin by just stating that I'm sure you're aware that we have a bit of a carp issue at Strathmore Lakes.
Yes, we do. And my intention this year is to contact Fish and Wildlife to help us eliminate the carp from the lake.
Okay, there's, I just read an, just read an article a couple of days. There's a new kind of a trout. It's called a tiger trout. And it's being used in the province to clear lakes of some species such as this. They're a bit of a fighting fish, but they are a trout. They're a brown trout of sorts, but they're apparently a little bit more voracious in regards to it. But, you know, I mean, I'm not sure what the ramifications of having the carp explosion in Strathmore Lakes is, and maybe there is none. But as you probably know, there's absolutely tons and tons of them. And they're fun catching, but and people are using them, but they really should be going into the garbage rather than back into the lake.
Well, they, when the pond was overflowing this spring, the carp were out of the water on the grass. And the other issue with the carp is that they will travel through the storm system. So they'll make their way into Kinsman and the various other storm ponds, and eventually out to Eagle Lake, which is a problem. So it does need to be rectified.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else from council? Seeing none, thank you very much for your report. And again, thank you and your staff. Please pass on to your staff how impressed we all are with how things went and the whole year that you guys put in.
Good, thank you. I will, thank you.
And that brings us to item 8.3, the item concerns addition of fluoride to the City of Calgary potable water supply. And I believe, Ethan, you're coming up, and I think you have a staff person introduction too.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I wanted to introduce to yourself and council Sonia Rigglesworth. Sonia is our new contracts officer, who has taken on the role from David Levaser, whose contract ended at the end of December 2020. They fortunately had about a six-week overlap, so we had a very good transition between the two. And Sonia's up to speed on many things and here today to speak on fluoride.
Thank you, and welcome, Sonia.
Thank you. Good morning, your worship and council. The town of Strathmore receives its potable water supply from a regional water system that is housed in Calgary. And in 2011, the City of Calgary removed the fluoride from their treatment system. And in 2019, Calgary began discussions about the reintroduction of fluoride to the system again. Fluoride's a naturally occurring mineral that's found at low levels in most drinking water sources. And the fluoride that comes from the City of Calgary that's naturally occurring is between 0.1 and 0.4 milligrams per liter. That's well below the Canadian drinking water guidelines of 1.5 milligrams per liter. And the City of Calgary's adopted rate of a lower amount of 0.7 milligrams per liter. The city is responsible to communicate and engage with the town of Strathmore regarding the potable water quality and the operational issues where fluoridation is concerned through the agreement that the town and the city has entered into previously. The document, cost to reintroduce fluoride in the water treatment process also states that the water utility does not expect to see an associated change in water utility rates or changes to service levels should council proceed with reintroducing fluoridation. This statement from Calgary suggests, but does not ensure that there'll be no financial implications to the town of Strathmore or other stakeholders if the fluoride is reintroduced. Under the master servicing agreement, that discussion should occur with the town. And this is up for discussion or interpretation for council.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Just before I turn to councilors, question for administration regarding the fluoridation issue in Calgary, has anyone in the City of Calgary administration or council contacted the town of Strathmore regarding potential reinstitution of fluoride in the City of Calgary's water?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we've had no communication from the City of Calgary on the reintroduction of fluoride. I think this is an information item yet at the City of Calgary level. And I think it's basically we're trying to inform council because they're probably going to get inquiries from residents at some point. We have had a couple inquiries from people in Calgary about seeking to help get opposition to it. But I don't think there's any decision point for the city yet on fluoride addition, so.
Thank you. I know I spoke with you and Jim earlier, and I find it a little concerning that we're in the Calgary Metropolitan Region Board, and this is a major issue, and it's never been broached, or we've never had any input as far as the impact on Strathmore, or the fact that we get the water from Calgary and we're not at the table as far as discussing, or at least be informed a bit more. So that's kind of a little bit of a worry for me. So do we have any questions or comments from councilors regarding fluoridation and the report presented? Seeing none, thank you very much for your report, and we'll wait to hear more, I guess. Maybe the City of Calgary will reach out to us. Maybe it's something I can even broach the subject at a CMRB board meeting, you know, because I know Eriery gets its water from Calgary, and we do. Satina Nation does as well, I think.
And Chestermere.
Chestermere, okay. Thank you very much. And that brings us to item 8.4, off-site levies update. And Ethan, I believe you're presenting on this one?
Yes, thank you, your worship and council. Here today to give a quick overview of off-site levies, what we have currently, where administration is heading as far as updating the off-site levies, and trying to get a general understanding of what council would like to do as we go through this path. So, next slide, please. Our current levies were updated in 2015 with bylaw 1517. It exists currently with four general levies. It's actually three levies. There is no stormwater. And seven special assessments. This is a bit of a confusing method in terms of you need to find your exact point on the map and then determine which special assessments apply to you. It is five years old, and the cost of construction as well as the needs of the town have changed over those five years, and that's why we're proposing to go through an update process. Next slide. This update was kicked off through a report done by ISL Engineering. So ISL was hired to provide a report on all of our master servicing studies, all the work that the town needs as development occurs, and the cost to do that work. The costs are provided within the master servicing studies, but what ISL does is they take that and they project it into a kind of a 30 to 35-year calendar and inflate the rates to make sure that we've collected enough levies for when construction happens, not for today's costs. It's believed the best way forward is to take an approach similar to our special assessments, but more so where all the levies apply to everybody in that area. So we would switch to a benefiting area approach, which would see the northeast, the northwest, and the south as our three main areas. Next slide. With this, the rates are suggested to increase based on the known infrastructure needs and the expected date of construction. You can see that the rates in each area are proposed to be between $150,000 and $206,000. Next slide, please. When we look at that in comparison to what we currently charge, we're seeing increases anywhere from 18% to all the way up to 49% in the northwest section of town. $60,000 increase, which is what that 49% is, equates to about a $5,000 per lot increase, when assuming there's about 15 lots per hectare. And on a new house construction, this was equal about a 2% increase in the total building cost. So in the overall scheme on a single house, it's not large, but when you're talking developer costs and increasing those by almost 50%, it is a big hike. In comparison, so when the update was made to the levies in 2015 from the 2011 bylaw, the increased rate averaged about 42%. Next slide. When we start comparing to other municipalities, we can see that Chestermere and High River are kind of our closest competition in terms of levies. Both of these places have levies that range as well. You can see there's a minimum and maximum for both of the municipalities. But we are still below places such as Okatoks and Eriery, and especially the City of Calgary. If council wishes to be at a rate which is lower than what's kind of proposed and be more competitive with these neighboring communities, we do have the option of doing an assist, basically funding part of these off-site levy projects through other sources, be it borrowing, be it taxes, be it any other source of funding that we can find. Next slide. An example of this is shown here. So if we did a 30% assist on both water and transportation, that would bring the levies back down a bit and bring them into a more competitive level with those neighboring communities. If we do decide to do an assist of some sort, it's recommended to only do that on water and transportation. The reason for this is those rates are global across the board for all of the areas, and therefore, applying an assist gives the equal benefit to all zones rather than providing more of a savings to one area over the other. Next slide. So I've used these assisted values to give you a better idea of what a 30% savings on water and transportation would do to staying competitive with the neighbors. In addition to all these levies, the MGA now allows us to provide, or to charge a levy on recreation and protective services. We are working through what is needed in the town as far as recreation. We have that report done in 2019 by RC Park. And also, the Protective Services has a 25-year kind of plan going forward where they know what their expansion needs are. We'll use that, and we'll evaluate that somewhat separate as we go through this process. Next slide. So next steps is getting some input and direction from council today, kind of get an understanding of what you guys would like to do as far as the off-site levies and how we would like to proceed. We are working with the Recreation and Protective Services Departments on getting their portion of the levy together. I would like to note, though, that the intent is to do a bylaw for the infrastructure needs, which is what our current bylaw is, is an update to that. And then we would get into a Recreation and Protective Services levy if council so desires.
So that would be separate to?
Yes. We know we need more time to do the Recreation and Protective Services one, and we don't want to hold up the general off-site levies.
Thank you.
We'd also want to do a developer and builder consultation, get input from the building community on what would these levies mean to them? Would this, what kind of increase would defer them from coming to Strathmore? We don't want to do that. And then also looking through payment terms. Currently, there's a bit of flexibility in our payment terms, and it has hurt the town in certain aspects. So we'd want to avoid that, kind of get a happy medium between what the town needs and what the developers need in order to continue to build. From here, we'll draft a bylaw, go through legal review to make sure that we haven't done anything we weren't supposed to, and then go through first reading. The intent is to get to first reading in March. Next slide. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you. And just before I go to councilors, my only concern, obviously, and it's one you've touched on, is we don't want to hurt the developers. We need to stay competitive in this town to try to drive home building. And so, yeah, that's a concern I have, is we have to find a way to fund these future projects without penalizing. And that's why I'm so happy that you've got consultations planned with our local builders and developers to get input from them. Councilors, Counselor Corvial?
Thank you, your worship. I have two quick questions. I have one, is it possibly in the slideshow that he was referring to? Because I don't know, like, I have, if everything is kind of in our package, I'm fine. But if it's not, I would like to see it if we could. And my other one is, yeah, like, I know the building has been slow in the last couple of years, and I believe it's been picking up as of, like, especially in this year. So that would, that would really concern me to hinder, I guess, or even deter people from wanting to develop here. But I do appreciate the report. Thank you.
Through the chair, I will share the report after.
Okay, thank you. Did you hear that, Counselor Corvial? Okay, perfect. I have Counselor Montgomery and then Counselor Peterson?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I'll echo Counselor Corvial's sentiments. I'm interested in, I guess, let's say, sharing the cost equitably across the town. And I, again, I would like you to see the report, so I can just get a better understanding of how the responsibilities are broken down across these various developments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. Jennifer?
Thank you, your worship. The report was emailed to council this morning at 9:10 a.m. So you should have it in your inbox.
Did everyone hear that?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Peterson?
Thank you, your worship. So, and thanks, Evan, too. I was wondering if there was potential to look at our recreation plan, our recreation master plan, and through the ISL report, to understand what pressures there are to build in the soft services area. And that's sort of my first question. I guess, to back up, do we know that ISL will have the fullness of that report before council?
So, your worship, through the chair, to clarify, ISL only did the infrastructure portion.
Right.
They did the water, the stormwater, the sewer, and this.
Yes.
Our internal processes will do the Recreation and Protective Services portion. We'll come up with our list of needs in the town over the next 25 years. And then we'll bring this to council for discussion on whether council agrees on that list of items. And from there, either the administration or we will hire a cost consultant to give us the proper costs to build each of those items. So that won't necessarily be ISL.
Right. So I just noticed in our package, there was an indication in the front end of the information that said when the report is complete. So that's why I was wondering if there was more information coming forward on that particular item. The other question I had was... The, the other, the other question I, I had was regarding something that the city of Calgary did when they negotiated with the development industry under, under the voluntary payment of off-site levies for infrastructure, for soft core, soft site infrastructure costs. And I know that they said, I can't remember what it was, in 2019, I think they had a $30,000 voluntary levy that they could negotiate and I was just wondering if we would be looking at something like that. And I, I think Rocky View as well did a voluntary implementation plan that, that had some pretty interesting parts to it. And I guess my, my concern is, you know, seeing a 49% increase would be, would be a detriment at this point to, to development in an area where we have been recently seeing some, some good progress. And so, that would be, that would be a big concern of mine. I think another, another one would be to, to, to look at, one of the things that was concerning me when I looked at the ISL report for the infrastructure costs and they broke it into three different areas and I was wondering if that would contribute to a greater potential for appeals and under that S7 where they talk about consistent benefit across the community, if that wouldn't have some kind of problematic process for our developers feeling like they hadn't been treated equally. And, and I know that developers, when, when the MG, when they changed the off-site levy process in 2015, developers were hugely concerned already at that point that they had, that the language had changed from, I think it was negotiate to consult and they felt that the power was very much placed in the hands of municipalities as opposed to the hands of developers and that was a major concern. So, reflecting Mayor Field's comments, I, I certainly appreciate your purposefulness in going forward and, and continuing to, to collaborate with developers in the go-ahead. But I, I guess I, I was concerned the way ISL rolled that, rolled that out in terms of their processes. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
I have other questions, your worship, but I think we have to be a little bit further down this road before, before we can, before we can talk about it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Sobel?
Just, just for clarification, your worship, I understood Jen, I believe it was Jennifer to say that the report came in this morning and I, I think she's talked about the PowerPoint presentation, but the ISL report, as I understand it, Counselor Peterson's read this and I, I can't locate that, but was that provided to us?
I can, Counselor Sobel, I can make sure that that gets shared with everybody after this meeting.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Your worship, can I, can I just ask for clarification from, from something that I don't understand to administration, to them? When, when they speak about, under, under the regulation S7 with regards to infrastructure and facilities, when they talk about identify the same benefiting area across each participating So, when ISL split out our communities, that didn't in any way violate that process?
Counselor Peterson without?
Today, your worship.
Sorry, go ahead.
I've finished, yeah.
We don't believe so, but we will definitely double check on that before anything comes before council for approval, be it bylaw first reading or anything else for discussion. I will check that section that you mentioned just to be sure.
And, and, and so then to follow up, when we talk about benefiting, so then when we do the rollout in terms of establishing off-site levies, will we actually know what the benefit is for each participating portion of the municipality within that defined area?
Yes, we will. So, we've got a list of each infrastructure upgrade that is applicable to each benefiting area, so it would be very clear as to what the levies are helping to pay for and that it will be, it should also be very clear that what's being paid for is solely for that area and if it's not solely for that area, it will show that it's being paid for by more than one area?
Thank you. And so, so then in terms of participating municipalities, if we were to go forward on a, on another project, you know, 10 years into the future with our, with our county allies and we were to do a build into the future, would, would we be able to then do the same kind of stakeholder process inter, under, under, I guess, current CMRB processes to co-develop depending on where we build?
Yes, we, we definitely could. There's multiple options on working with municipal partners on levies or other funding types and with the off-site levy being a bylaw, council has the opportunity to update that at any time, so should something change as far as an alternative funding source, we could then update our own off-site levies to make sure that it's in line.
So, if we were going to plan, you know, where it was necessary and where it was practical, we were going to plan into that 25 to 35 years into the future that, that you identified, could, could we then coordinate our infrastructure and our facility provisions with our neighboring municipalities, but also with groups like the WID?
Absolutely. And to a point, we do that. So, with our storm water levy, for example, it's very closely tied to our commitments with CSMI and our commitments with WID's, our storm water agreement.
Thank you. I really appreciate your report, thanks.
Thank you very much and thank you, Ethan, for your report. So, circling back, we can expect this to come back to us?
Yes, I would, I'm intending to have first reading ready in March.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I don't think we have any urgent business this morning. Administrative inquiries? None? Thank you. So, at this time, I'm looking for a motion to go in camera. Oh, have to come out of committee, the whole, sorry. Motion to come out of committee, hold, Counselor Sobel? All in favor? And that's carried and then a motion to go in camera. Counselor Corvial? Thank you.
Some of.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. And so, we're going-